Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the applicable legends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's the birthday girl? Okay.
At least she's in a meeting.
Amanda?
Okay. Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Glass?
Here.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Here.
Chairman Say?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
An alternate call is absent. We are not going to be approving the resolutions this evening. The city attorney had provided some edits to both of the documents and I mistakenly copied the old versions for the agenda, sorry. So we will be bringing both of those and the resolution for 316 Los Lomas back at the June agenda, so we will not be signing off on those this evening. So the next item are the actions for March, since we didn't have an April meeting. If anyone has any changes or corrections?
To make the margin of truth that actions may exist.
Oh, second. Call for both? We'll do, we'll have to do a roll call because we're electronics, so Commissioner Kennedy?
Hi.
Commissioner Glass?
I was not here, so I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, thank you. Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Say?
Yes.
Chairman Say, excuse me. Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is a application, it's a site plan application for 337 Descanso Street. The owners are Gary and Tracy Kazarian. Mr. Edwards is going to be available by phone if we have questions for him. This is a hearing for a site plan to demolish a single-story duplex with three bedrooms, three baths, and rebuild a two-story, single-family dwelling with three bedrooms and five baths. It is in the high-density flats zone. As I said, they propose to demolish a single-story duplex and rebuild a two-story, single-family dwelling. The project is in the high-density residential zone designated area. The project meets all the development standards for the zone. The project includes an autowet parking space, which I think on the plans is seven by ten, and trash containers in the rear to be accessed from the alley between Descanso and Catalina Streets. The structure will contain three bedrooms and five baths. The project includes a roof deck that is accessed via a roof hatch from the second story. The project is in the floodplain as defined by Flood Map 06037C2204F Zone AE. An elevation certificate will be required as part of the construction plan check to ensure that the finished floor is at adequate height to meet the FEMA floodplain development standards. We are recommending that you find that this project is allowed by the 2020 growth policy as it is involving an existing residential structures which is going to be repaired or replaced in kind or remodeled or enlarged, provided no additional bedrooms are added or dwelling units are added. We are recommending that you find this categorically exempt under CEQA, under Section 15303A of the State CEQA Guidelines for New Construction or Conversions of Small Structures. This project is exempt from the requirements of a coastal development permit as it is a single-family structure and it is not within 50 feet of the edge of a coastal bluff and it is not between the sea and the First Public Road. Based on the preceding facts outlined in the staff report, we are recommending that you find, excuse me, that you, sorry, completely lost my place. That based on the proposed project's compliance with the applicable principles and standards of the Avalon Municipal Code, the recommendation is that you find it categorically exempt under the CEQA Section 15303 for new construction or conversion of small structures, that you find the project is allowed by the 2020 growth policy, that the project is exempt from a coastal development requirement, and that the planning commission adopts the findings to support approval of the site plan for demolition and rebuild of a two-story, single-family dwelling with the condition that an elevation certificate is prepared by a licensed surveyor or engineer to determine the applicability of the FEMA substantial improvement guidelines and is provided to the city prior to the commencement of construction plan check. The purpose of doing it before plan check is if the certificate comes back and shows that the finished floor is going to put the height of the house taller than the height on allows, then we would have to come back and reconsider. And like I said, Mr. Edwards is available by phone if you have any questions for him. Are questions coming?
Open up to the public?
Sure.
Any, anyone asking any questions, Mr. Palmer?
No comments so far. Thank you.
Close the public hearing? Open it up for discussion. Anybody have any questions regarding this project?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay.
The third floor is one way up and one way down, and clearly it's meant to be used and there's a jacuzzi up there, so that's that, and I don't know, I'm thinking this is maybe future planning. Okay, the, so the roof deck, which is at basically 28 feet, and it's only one way up and one way down, and then the autowet space looks like it's only three feet wide, and I don't know, we've gone back and forth, I mean, yeah, you could squeeze one in there, but I don't know if that meets the, you know, the current regulations, and I don't know if it's just a slip of the pen, but you have a master bedroom and then you have, you know, you have other bedrooms upstairs, I mean, you don't have, they're labeled, you get the masters downstairs, and then upstairs you have bedrooms, from what I can read here, three and four. And so there's, so I guess we forgot about bedroom two, although it sure looks like the play area with its own private bath, maybe that's...
Are you talking about the den?
Yeah, no, the play area on the second floor.
Oh.
On the second floor, the play area has its own bathroom, so if that's future planning, it is, but it's kind of like, at least they could have maybe numbered it, you know? So you got, you've got bedroom, you've got the bathrooms, you've got two, three and four upstairs, and downstairs you've got two, but I don't know, I mean, it looks like, yeah, it's a large, single-family house, but the labeling of just that's kind of a little sloppy, or I don't see that you could do this, you know, into a duplex, you could, something could become a kitchen, but the main thing, you know, the access to the rooftop and with the jacuzzi, I think it's meant to be more than occasional use, and that'll be loud, you know, I mean, it's one thing to be sitting on a rooftop, but another one with a jacuzzi, so those are my comments, because I've only seen these till now.
Would just speak to one comment that Commissioner Putnam made. The parking space is seven by 10. They're allowed to use the setback for accommodating the parking.
Well, it's seven by 10, but it shows the autowet. I don't, I mean, this is on the first sheet, right, so it shows, ma'am, it, the autowet, where the word autowet is, you've only got three feet, and the trash is a further left.
Well, the trash is recessed, correct?
Yeah.
So that wouldn't, we didn't see that, that was figured out. Yeah, I think that's the two squares, right, Sandy?
See, right here.
Yeah, but see, if you have the second sheet on the top on the first floor plan, you've got the autowets next to the trash, and the total, the total width is, I can't read if that's seven even and four even, I can't, I can't read it.
Yeah, to me, I can see it, it looks like it's seven total.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven total with the autowet and the trash, right? So that's within the seven, right, Amanda?
And the autowet is allowed to park on the setback, correct?
Right, and I think I, what, I'm looking at what I think Commissioner Putnam's looking at is there's a four-foot width that's defined, that appears, it could apply to the autowet space, but the, that same line also has, is dimensioned out to the property line of seven feet.
Do you think Pete can just clarify that?
Well, the other thing I just asked him to clarify, that storage that shows right there, I'm talking, it's a foot storage, looking at this, it only looks like it's a foot wide, correct?
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me, so, and that cuts into the trash recess closet, which doesn't look like a closet, it looks like a space because the storage is marked off. It's just that sometimes then trash winds up being elsewhere.
It's just different on both pages.
Yeah, 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 me too.
What do you think? I just would like to know which is it, because one would be bad.
If the storage is a foot deep, then that would leave six feet between the edge of the storage and the property line.
So he's within the envelope?
Which would allow the six by 10 space.
Right.
You see what you're saying about the label, but it just looks like the space is there to do it. You've got seven feet, finding the part that's...
Do you see that, Sandy, right here?
Yeah, look at the next page.
Yeah, it's different from one page to the next.
Hey, Bart, talk into the microphone. So you have Pete on the phone, is it? It sounds, it sounds to me like there's a handful of Pete-related questions here. Is that kind of what I'm hearing? Would it be terrible to have Pete come down here rather than be on the telephone?
Pete's not able to come down?
Okay, okay, okay.
I mean, these are details, but before...
So, and just to add, so, the one other thing that I wanted to talk to Pete about, just so everybody else is aware, I don't understand the quote-unquote "hatch" on the roof. Is it, is it done that way so it does not have a verti, like a vertical doorway you have to go through?
They can't, they can't have anything else because they're already maxed out.
At the height.
It's 379, so they have to come just straight up and have it leveled off, but it's clearly something that's going to be used a lot if you've got a jacuzzi up there.
So, and that was my concern, it looks like the stairwell is reasonable and responsible, but how that...
But it's only one from the third floor.
Well, and so I don't know how the rest of that, how that hatch part works, I mean, is it a mechanical hatch, is it a...
That I do not know.
I don't get it.
And that would be, the building code requirements for that hatch would be under the purview of Mr. Gilbert. It'd be a building code defined how that hatch works, but you're correct, they didn't have a structure where you have a little dockhouse up there so that the stairs go up and are covered because of the height, it would put them above the height.
And so there will be no handrail going forward?
There would be a handrail up to where the hatch starts, but you're right, there probably wouldn't be a handrail. I don't know, I don't have that information. So we want to ask Pete about the hatch.
Amanda, are you aware of any others that have been built that way in Avalon that we could physically see?
I don't know. I, I can't think of any.
I have a question. Would a, would a handrail be limited by the height requirement?
No, you could have the handrail, the, right past the VP on Marilla, that first building?
I wouldn't think so.
They've got roof decks that you come up to...
Yeah, they may have been solving a problem that didn't exist. I'm thinking a handrail might not...
No, that would be a safety issue, I don't think the handrail would enter in.
No, but I mean, they're putting a hatch because they feel like the handrail goes into the height envelope.
Well, if you look at...
But it doesn't matter, then they would have the option, and I would imagine most people would rather not have a hatch, would rather have a handrail.
If you look at the southeast elevation on page A4, you can see that the roof deck, the height of the roof deck includes the surround, the appropriate railing, the, around the deck. So the hatch itself is actually about four feet above the decking, because it's at the height above the 42-inch railing that has to go around the deck. Does that make sense? So the hatch is not flush on the floor of the roof, it's actually raised up almost a little bit taller than the 42-inch handrails.
So what you're saying is a real short guy doesn't have to open up the roof?
There you go, yes. So we want to ask, but Pete can clarify the hatch, and then we want to ask him about the parking space.
Yeah, it just looks different on, the way it looks on A1 to the, to A2, it doesn't...
Yeah.
One, the trash receptacles are running back behind it, and this one says the trash receptacles are right up against it, and then it looks like, anyway, it just looks different, I would just like to see how the trash receptacles go if you keep going to through the autowet, and then if you look at A2...
This is microphone call.
Oh, sorry, gotta get closer, too far back. Then if you look at A2, it, it just, it's backward.
It's, it's reversed.
But the trash receptacles are next to it as opposed to...
Behind it?
Down, yeah, so I'm just wondering which one it is, and I'm, and you know, could, that could make a difference, if the trash receptacles, trash recess closet and storage, then I, I would say like Sandy, that's a pretty, I guess that whole other space, that one line, I guess it would go all the way over to the edge of the property, I don't know, it's just different on two pages, so I'm just wondering which one it is.
Yeah, it's a matter of deciding which one you read, which one you go with.
And none of that stuff that's on the rooftop puts it above the height?
That happens sometimes, you know, the description isn't what the other is, so you better choose one or the other. But would they give it to us if there's two choices, which is, which one are we really dealing with?
And what would be the reason why they wouldn't just name it in bedroom one, bedroom two, and then have three and four, why, why is there no bedroom two?
Hi, Pete, I'm gonna put you on, I have you on my cell, and I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, and hopefully the mic can pick you up, okay? Hold on. So this is that can you hear me now commercial?
I can hear you.
You can hear me.
Can anybody hear me?
Okay, say, testing, testing.
Testing, testing, is there anybody out there?
Yeah, when you hear you can...
Hello?
Can you hear? Pete, we have a couple of questions, I don't know if you've been able to be watching us from afar, we wanted to confirm the dimensions on the autowet parking space, and then if you could clarify how the roof hatch is going to work up to the roof deck.
Okay, are you, if you're talking to me, I can...
I'm talking, I'm sorry, Pete, could you clarify the size of the autowet parking space? And we were looking for a little bit of clarification on how the roof, how the hatch to the roof deck will function.
Okay, can you, can you repeat that closer to the phone, I'm all the time hearing it.
Can, can you just pick the phone up and ask him?
We're wanting to know the dimensions of the parking space, can you hear me?
Yeah.
And we wanted some clarification on how the hatch going up to the roof deck is going to function.
Well, it just folds open, let me get you, kind of like any other roof deck, it's basically low to the ground, and it lifts up as you come up the stairs. Pivot some sideways, let's see if I can get you here. Had you on my phone, but I'm talking to you on my phone. Sorry, um, okay. The autowet is seven feet by 10 feet.
Pete, on the second page of the plans, there's a storage that shows on the floor plan that kind of sticks out into the parking area, that appears that it might reduce that parking area by about a foot.
Well, that, that's just one of those rubber-made things that you buy there and stick on there, that's not part of the building, so that could just go.
Okay.
I mean, that's not part of the, the construction of the building.
Okay, so you're allowing approximate 12 inches for storage if you need to in that seven feet?
Yeah, if it's an issue, we'll just move it.
Okay.
So is it an issue, and why is it an issue? I'm just asking.
We're just worrying if it's big enough for an autowet by the time, is there ample space to get an autowet?
Okay. No, I mean, I'm just asking, so, I mean, because he says he's willing to...
It's just a discrepancy, that's...
Yeah, it just looked different, it looked...
On one page it's one thing and it's the other, so if we, will we approve something, are we approving page one or page two? You know, there's choices, so...
Okay, do we get clarification?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that answer, and I think we're waiting on the hatch next.
I, I just had a question, I mean, Amanda, you would know this, as this is a tear-down and a new construction, have developers' fees been, where, where's that sitting? Wouldn't this, as a question, would this not be something that would be subject to developers' fees if we had them?
Um, I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head how much new square footage you add to a structure that makes it, that would make it subject to developer impact fees.
But this would be 100%, if it's a demo, if they're scraping a lot, then all of the new construction is, it's not adding something, it's everything.
I'm not familiar enough with the development impact fees.
Jordan, can you hear me?
Demo, they're scraping a lot, all of the...
Isaac, is that you?
Sorry, I'm just, just trying to troubleshoot with Jordan, sorry to interrupt.
Jordan, can you hear me?
We're having a lot of technical difficulties this evening. I don't, I'm not familiar with the development impact fees to know if they would give them credit for the existing house, because the development impact fees are intended to offset the impact of that, that project. If it's been a single-family residence and it's going to continue to be a single-family residence, I don't, I can't tell you 100% if development impact fees would apply.
And I'm not sure what the status is of that process yet anyway, but I just am always thinking to myself, if it was, you know, the city is...
I think if, if it is subject to those, then those would typically be collected when you collect the building permit fees.
Mr. Palmer, can you answer where the, do you know what the, where we are in the process of developers' fees?
Well, they have, yeah, they have passed, we are working with finance, actually, we were working right before the coronavirus to get that, those accounts set up, obviously we haven't really had a lot of new development, so I do apologize for that, and as to whether this project would apply to development impact fees, my initial response would be yes, I'll have to check with Isaac just to confirm that, but my understanding is any new development would be subjected to the development impact fees, and this would be one of those ones. So we'll be working with Matt Baker, the finance director, to ensure that everything's set up prior to that.
Thank you. Bob, did you get your question asked, answered?
We did not address the hatch.
So we're waiting on the hatch and the purpose of the hatch.
Pete, can you give us a little more details about how the hatch works, is it metal, is it, how does it work?
It's metal, I'm trying to get Tori on another line here so she can explain it, I haven't, I haven't seen it, so, but I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it's like a metal hatch that, you know, swings open the stair side of the bottom of it. Is there?
Who are you talking to?
Talking to you, how does the hatch work?
The hatch is just hinged, so it would open up like a skylight.
A skylight, does it hinge on the long side?
It is on the long side, so there's more, it's like three feet, three wide.
Well, if it hinges on the long side, then the whole thing hinges on the long side, then...
Yeah.
And the hatch is how, how wide, three foot six?
Yes.
Okay, is it on a curb?
Yes.
Okay, hang on, anyone? Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, so the hinge is just, it's a metal, like a roof hatch, it's three feet wide, three and a half feet wide, more or less, and it hinges along the length, the long side of it, and then comes up, you know, it just swings, swings up as you walk up into it, release it and pivot, pivots up with a little hydraulic event closure, or is it a scotch stay?
Okay.
It would, it would hinge like a skylight would, I guess, for lack of a better description, if it hinges on the long side, or, or kind of like a door would, if it was laid apart almost flat. Is there, is there a question beyond that that I could help with?
Could that, Pete, could that upstairs stairwell going from the second story to the third story be treated almost like an internal atrium where it's open at the top?
Like an atrium that you said?
Yeah, so you would have, basically, you, at the bottom of that stairwell, you would have an entry door that enters the stairs, and then that stairwell would then lead to, inside that stairwell would, would then be exposed to rain and the outside elements, but you would have a straight egress to the roof and a straight egress back down without...
Yeah, this one here, I don't think the, so Tori, this thing is open to the, is this an exterior staircase or is the entire thing enclosed?
Well, it's all enclosed.
So it's all enclosed at the moment from the, from the outside, so there's no rain will come down in it unless you let the hatch open.
And then the hatch will be off the straight, thick, uh, first step.
In the middle of the house?
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure that helps answer any questions then, huh?
What's the question?
What's the concern that it's...
Well, it just, just, on a, just a sheer design, since this is a new build, it would seem to me to be easier and more effective to build a interior atrium sort of thing. So at the, at the base of the stairs, you would have a doorway entry to the stairs, and the stairwell itself to the roof deck would be open all the way up.
Well, that was one of the options, and that makes the stairs, an exterior, the whole thing has to be treated like an exterior stair coating, and you have to have a drain in the middle of the room to pick up...
So this would stop you from having a drain at the bottom?
So that was part of the reason, we didn't want to have the place to...
Well, and so the reason I'm, the reason I'm bringing this up is when you have, when you have a skylight hatch and it's internal and part of the interior structure, that stairwell is going to need to be sprinkled.
Of course.
And once you open that, so, let's say, let's say subjectively that the hatch is open and, you know, there's been a good party and everything's good and gracious and everything, and there is a fire and that hatch is open, that's going to completely change the fire dynamic of that entire structure as a result of that hatch being opened.
Well, there's a door at the bottom of the stairs, too.
There is, there is a door at the bottom of the stairs?
There could be, you hang on, Tori, is there a door at the bottom?
So that's my point, if there is a, well, the...
The hatch is, we don't want that.
Okay.
The drawing doesn't show a door at the bottom of the stairs, so my recommendation would be to have that stairwell be an open atrium, and that it does not require sprinkling, and it doesn't interrupt the fire flow in that structure.
And put the, put the door at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was discussed, hang on one second, so, they want the door at the bottom and the whole thing open, is that an issue?
Well, it's a water pushing, I mean, you know, we just have to deal more with, I like it, but...
That's okay.
Yeah.
We'll work it out, okay?
I would suggest...
That's, that's fine, we can do that. It's just, it's a little more of a waterproofing problem, but that's not the end of the world, so...
I would suggest that having the building constructed in a way that it can be properly fire sprinkled and protected is part of the building code review. If you wanted to add a condition that they have to have that stairwell assessed to determine how the hatch operates with the sprinkler system, then that could be a condition that we add to the project, but that's probably more in the purview of the building plan check and not necessarily a zoning question. It's a good point, but I think it would be valuable if we just add that as a condition and they figure out with the, with the building inspector and their fire sprinkler person which, which construction method works best for, so that that hatch doesn't create that chimney effect that you're talking about. If that's acceptable to the, Mr. Kennedy.
Fine with me, that'd be great.
Okay. Did you get all that, Pete?
So, I, to clarify the staircase thing, is the concern that it's, that it's going to create like a chimney effect?
I think so. I think that was the concern, and so what I suggested was that we include a condition of approval that the design of the stairway would need to be reviewed by the building official, the probably the fire chief, and the fire sprinkler designer to determine the best way to design that staircase so that it doesn't create that chimney effect.
Or, or design it with a door at the bottom and leave it completely open and it's no longer part of that equation.
I missed that, so... Amanda, you're about the only person that can actually hear clearly, so what was the last one?
Or you can agree at this point to redesign the staircase and have it open and exposed and have this door at the bottom of the stairs.
Well, if we could...
You'd have to have a door on the second floor, too.
Well, yeah, no, you'd have to, that'd be the only door. The other thing would be all outside the other way. Well, if we could just leave it, then we could talk to the building inspector and fire department, work that out, and it may in fact come down to that, and maybe some other alternatives. As long as the concern is, is fire, the chimney effect of the whole thing, then the only way to get around that is to put a door at the bottom and make that on the outside, then that's what we'll do. If there's some other way that keeps it from not having to do the word waterproofing, then we can work it out amongst the other people, then we'll do that, if that's all right.
Perfect.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Pete. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more. Okay, there's three bedrooms, even though we've skipped a number. There's three bedrooms, five baths, but we've got a jacuzzi also, so none of that takes extra water approval?
Only bedrooms.
But only, I get it, but only bedrooms, but when you're adding the jacuzzi, which isn't like, you've got bedrooms and bathrooms and you have a kitchen, but...
What do you mean, like the jacuzzi on the top deck?
Yeah. I mean, that's a different, you know, that's I get the way it's written with bedrooms and bathrooms.
If it's not a built-in jacuzzi, you have a jacuzzi in your backyard, I don't think you need a water allocation to be fully standard jacuzzi, it's like you're...
I'm trying to think, as I look down on all those jacuzzis on the roofs of people's homes down in the flat, if I've ever seen any of them included. I, I get where you're coming from with it, but I don't...
It's not like tying into the water main, I believe, right?
Well, I mean, it's using water.
It's using water, but I've never, I've never had... I mean, because we, we have approved, like balcony, I believe, on East Whitley, and it had a jacuzzi on the plans, I think you were here.
Yeah, no, that's Robert Scott.
And there was no, like, extra water allocation for that, and it, I don't recall it.
But I get it, technically, you've got three bedrooms, and so now you put in five bathrooms for three bedrooms, but also a jacuzzi. We approved that for Robert Scott, but he's not adding a bunch of other stuff.
But when it comes to the water, we really need to make sure that we understand that bathrooms don't... So what about the Edison Company, what's the update on the out-of-water rationing? With the utility?
It's my understanding that Edison is working towards possibly issuing some smaller allocations. That's a big, possibly. I don't have a official...
Right, you don't have an update.
Letter from Edison, but I would, I just, I would like to make the point that the various swimming pools, built-in swimming pools, some of those that you see going in and out at Hamilton, those have been included in their water allocation, but I don't recall when it's a freestanding jacuzzi.
Weren't those things that they, they got that through because they were approved prior to the drought? But we're just coming off of a drought, I, we ought to be a little more aware of water. I mean, that was my fourth big drought in my lifetime, but we're just coming off of a big one, so...
Well, we can certainly...
Shouldn't we kind of, kind of be, I mean, I remember that out at Hamilton, they said those were approved prior to the drought.
They got a water allocation prior to the drought.
Yeah, so that's a different thing. This is a new thing they're asking for.
We can certainly include, because the question is there, we can certainly include a condition of approval that they confirm with Edison, whether or not installation of the jacuzzi would require an allocation.
I kind of look at a jacuzzi like, have you heard of a jacuzzi? Have you dug up one of these bathrooms with a bathtub in it? I mean, my bathtub at my house is probably 150 gallons, I only use it because I'd have to dump my hot water heater in three times a month.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big, it's a big tub.
No, I get it, it's just the water use, and, you know, okay, so you've got five bathrooms, nobody has to wait for a shower, maybe, but when you've got a jacuzzi, that's a lot of water. I mean, this thing looks like, if you scale it off for where they show the hatches, it looks like the jacuzzi's eight by eight at least, and we don't know how deep it is.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the four conditions recommended by staff, with an additional three, one that, so it'd be condition number five, parking is adequate. Number six, that the hatch is fire safe, if the hatch is used, or that it's inspected to assure that fire safety is met, and number seven, that they have adequate water rights.
Okay, I'll second that. Call for vote. Any more comments? Commissioner Kennedy?
No, I was just going to confirm, no comments.
Thank you.
Wait, can I, and can we check on developer fees? For this construction?
Yeah, that would be a part of the regular process, so number eight, check on developer fees.
Yeah, and I've already talked to Isaac, and he, we're going to verify that on whether it's applicable, so we can report back.
Thank you. So do you want to, do you accept my modified motion?
I do, I second it with all those conditions.
So Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Glass?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Aye.
Chairman Say?
Aye.
Commissioner Putnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
They approved it with several conditions relating to the hatch, the water allocation, confirming the size of the parking, and we're going to check on the development impact fees.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Well, thank you, everybody, we're off to the vote.
All right, hope things go well over there. All right, bye-bye.
Okay, Amanda, on to the next item.
Our next item is an application for conditional use permit for bar, restaurant, cafe use at 199 Chimes Tower Road. This is the Zangaree Pueblo Hotel. The project is in the coastal zone and is subject to a coastal development permit, which requires this public hearing and planning commission approval, and the project, and the planning commission will determine whether the project is within the 300-foot appealable seaward area boundary, and we're recommending that the project is categorically exempt under section 15303, Construction or Conversion of Small Structures. This applicant has applied, had submitted an application to the ABC to add beer and wine license, on-premise license at the hotel, and that was the initial reason for their conditional use permit. When we spoke to them, they also indicated that they wished to open up their dining area to the public. Southern California Edison has not reviewed the expansion of the use to include public service, and they will need to make a determination if additional fresh water is required. The project does require the coastal development permit. The planning commission must determine whether the project is within the 300-foot appealable seaward area boundary. It is our recommendation that it is not within the 300-foot appealable seaward area boundary, and there's an illustration that exhibits that. We have, I'm sorry, I lost my place. This project could be subject to inclusionary housing, which requires that every application for a tentative map, parcel map, or site plan shall include a statement by the applicant that this chapter is not applicable or shall include an inclusionary housing plan. The applicant reduced the number of hotel rooms in the earlier renovation and stated that no additional employees would be generated by the project. The applicant will be required to provide a similar, similar analysis to document whether this expansion of the food and beverage use will generate the need for additional employees. We are recommending that you find it categorically exempt, as I say it, under 15303, class three, which consists of the conversion of existing small structures from one use to another, where only minor modifications are made in the exterior of the structure, and C, a store, hotel, office, restaurant, or similar structure, not involving the use of significant amounts of hazardous substances and not exceeding 2,500 square feet in floor area. The expansion of the food and beverage use will not result in any change to the exterior of the structure. The area subject to the expansion of use is 724 square feet, and no hazardous materials are proposed for use in the area subject to this entitlement. The area is 724 square feet, and the occupancy as set by the egress requirements are 43 people, including staff, for the dining area. We have received three letters in opposition to the project from the adjacent property owners. They, all three, expressed the same concerns with the project. One is that there is no parking available for non-guest customers for the restaurant and bar cafe, and they're concerned about the traffic if all of us locals were to drive up there and go to the restaurant. And their last concern was that the noise that could come from the exterior decks if you were having a private party or you had guests being served on those exterior decks. So in response to their concerns, we added some conditions of approval. One would be that the approval to, to extend their service to non-guest would not commence until they have received approval for an alternate transportation for a shuttle. They had come to the city a while back and requested a shuttle, and the city asked them to put off that request until after the hotel had been up and running. So our condition of approval suggested is that this would not be enacted until they were granted that shuttle approval. The second condition was that the decks would be limited to a curfew of 9:00 PM for service of food and beverage. That's the same curfew that we put on the exterior deck down at the trailhead, because they do have those residential uses right across the street. I spoke to Daniel Tang today, he's the manager, and if we have questions for him, I can reach him on his cell, and he was agreeable to those conditions.
Okay. Should I open the public? I'm going to open the meeting up to this, to the public. Mike?
I have no public comment.
Okay. Close the public hearing.
I had a neighbor come stand in the front portion of the process and talk, and she was standing in the street, but his concern was, it's a residential neighborhood that is now hiding all of us out into the residential, they have to forget it, and the noise and all that, I'm sure, was that one of those from Dave's company?
Uh-huh, yes, it was.
And I told him, who the other commissioners were, and I don't know if he approached any of you, but it would be a good idea to you, but that was one thing. The other thing he had mentioned to me was, even with a shuttle up there, where do you turn around? You know, it's a tight hairpin corner and all that kind of stuff, and those were his concerns, and, you know, I told him, I would bring them up and we air them here.
The city granted an encroachment permit to the Zangaree to create that parking pad outside their lobby entrance for the purposes for cabs to be able to pull in there and drop off guests. So it was designed to be a place to turn around, but it's not necessarily intended for that function to be for all of us to go up there and use it as a turnaround. I don't think it... Correct, it's supposed to be a pick-up and drop-off, not a cul-de-sac.
Amanda, do you happen to know how many employees they have now?
I do not remember the number off the...
For function of, because I was, you know, on the plans, it says, or in the, when they're talking about the description, it says that it's restricted to an occupancy of 43 people, including staff, and it says... to an occupancy of 43 people, including staff, and it says by square footage that it's at 42, so that means they would only have one staff to run a restaurant. And I'm just wondering in the whole picture, because the one thing I think is parking and safety for that corner, which is pretty much a thoroughfare, when, because summer's going to roll again eventually, we have to think about the future, and everything comes around that corner from, you know, the general to every rental golf cart, to everything comes zooming around there. And so I have a, I have a concern about that, because there really is no parking, and I also have a concern about the number of employees, and there's no employee parking, which is not a huge deal, except that it's not in a place one could easily walk to, you could, but, you know, so that, that concerns me a little.
So Amanda, I have a few questions as well. The staffing, and we always get into trouble when it comes to this and not creating housing. So, I mean, that's a pretty big restaurant for only one, the way the numbers were figured for one employee, so that I have an issue with. I, also, you said, I believe we approved for the, like, restaurant for catering to the customers, correct?
The original restaurant.
The original approval process.
The original...
So that's why the water was already in to the approval of the project, correct?
Sort of. The original hotel, there were two things. One, the original hotel had a kitchen that they used to do some...
Continental breakfasts and...
And I, I actually think it was just a small staff room that had a kitchen in it. The second part of the water allocation situation was that they reduced the number of hotel rooms, which allowed them to almost receive a credit for water because they were reducing their hotel, the number of those rooms. The kitchen is 119 square feet, so it's like 10 by 19. It's not, it's not a huge kitchen.
So they did reduce after we, they did reduce when we approved?
Correct.
Yes, I do remember. And the Edison Company in the tariffs does say, if you can prove that you reduced that certain amount of money, and water, you can transfer that water to another use, but you can never, ever create another hotel room without getting a water allocation.
Correct.
Because it would be permanent, Paula, so that's a fact that, so...
But, I mean, I would say, in a kitchen, I just, this is something that, anyway, a kitchen that size, that is, the water isn't so much an issue for me, but I would say out of a kitchen that size, because, I mean, like a lobster trap, I mean, they all have these just kitchens, and they pump it out. So it just depends on how you organize it and who your staff is. And so if you've, you know, got a crackerjack staff, you can do it. So I just, that, it just, it's mostly about parking, because we have shuttles, you know, for the Buffalo Nickel, but I have never used it to go to the Buffalo Nickel. I mean, so I'm just saying that locals, if they're going to use it, and they have plenty of parking when you go there, it's not an issue, but I, I would never, I mean, I never take the shuttle out there. It works for people that are coming to visit and want to go there, but I just have really a lot of concern about the traffic up there and the parking. And then the other thing was, I really wanted to go in and see it, because, but they have it all sequestered.
Yeah, it's also, you can't.
So that is one thing that kind of, I wanted to see what the complaint was about the balcony and the, so that, that kind of is limiting me on being able to make an informed decision, so that, that's hard right now.
I've got a question. So right now, they can use the kitchen for dining for their guests?
Correct.
And I know in the past, we allowed hotels to do guest and guest friends. Are they able to do that right now?
I believe so.
Okay.
Because the, the occupancy of the space is still what it is, so the...
But primarily guests, and they, they can operate it as a restaurant right now?
Correct.
And they can get their beer and wine license?
If you approve their CUP this evening.
What if, if we don't approve their CUP, and they have the beer and wine license just for their guests, is that something they can do?
You could, you could condition your approval this evening that you're going to allow them to have a restaurant, bar, café. We, in our conditional use permit process, we don't differentiate on whether or not it includes alcohol. Restaurant bars, cafes, it's all in the same category. So they need the conditional use permit, even if they just want to serve beer and wine just to their guests. So if the non-guest is creating most of the concerns about the impact on the neighborhood, you could condition their approval that their beer and wine service can only be for their paying guests, and it cannot be open to the general public.
So it would be to their guests and to their guest friends, but not the general public?
I think that's what...
So in theory, that would be a way of not generating more traffic? I mean, it's, they would just be adding beer and wine to their menu right now?
Correct.
And their service?
Correct.
Okay.
So they don't have a beer and wine license to do just that for their guests at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so there's no alcohol served there at this time?
Not that I know of.
Anybody else have any?
I would support that concept. I don't believe that just putting a shuttle in solves the problem in the neighborhood. There's a shuttle, like you said, the Buffalo Nickel, I don't use it, I drive out and park. I love the idea of another restaurant in town, I truly, truly do, but this restaurant's not really any different than the restaurant at the Canyon Hotel. Great restaurant, great food, I live right around the corner. Sometimes I walk there, sometimes I drive there, and the parking there at that restaurant is busy, and it's created an impact on the neighborhood, and the neighborhood is small in that zone. So I'm okay with the beer-wine thing, I'm okay with them serving food to their own patrons and guests. I think that's an amenity that most hotels need, but I don't believe, until they, until they could provide ample parking in a neighborhood, which I don't think they can based on their footprint, I would support just allowing a beer and wine, no general public.
And I also would say we need to, like, the employee situation is a little bit questionable for me, that...
Parking for the employees?
Yeah, that there's one, one person employed for the restaurant.
If we can just get, like, if you could do like a little bit of an audit, I wouldn't say audit, but just to do the percentage of employees for the new, you know, use, that they're not going to add a certain amount so that it wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to create the housing?
We can, I can certainly do that. I, I think the ask of them is different depending on what you approve.
What we approve, okay.
If, if you're only going to approve them to add beer and wine to the service that they're already providing to their guests, then I would anticipate the staffing level change would be none, because they're already preparing food, now they just, that person's going to open a bottle of wine and serve it. So I wouldn't anticipate that their staffing levels would change. But if you're suddenly expanding your service to where it's beyond guests, and there's a lot of other people coming up there, so your dining hours are expanded, then I could see asking them to confirm whether or not there's going to be additional staff. And if there are going to be additional staff, then that's a point in which you also can ask them, okay, then you need to do something about parking.
Well, I am...
It becomes, it becomes a snowball effect.
I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Because it does say one person in the kitchen, and then they're saying 43 for the dining room, so that's two people, and so, because they're saying 43, that's what they anticipate for 43 people, including staff, in conditional use permit. The food and beverage area is restricted to an occupancy of 43 people, including staff, but if it fits 42, and they, you know, have one employee in the dining room and one employee in the kitchen, then that's more than, or unless the chef's going to cook and serve, then that's a difference.
And it depends, if you're doing breakfast, lunch, and dinner, you can't expect somebody to be on duty all day.
That actually was a question that somebody posed to me, is, is, what is it? Is it breakfast, lunch, and dinner, is it just dinner? If it's a full-service restaurant, do they have any idea what the hours would be for that as well?
I don't know, and I think it would depend, again, on what your approvals are going to be. If you're not approving non-guest, then what they're doing for their guests...
Yeah, is on, yeah, I completely agree.
But I also want to clarify that the numbers, the 42 and the one in the kitchen, that's, that's a calculation, a formula that's set by the amount of square footage.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to have 42 people seated and dining and only one person working in the kitchen. It just means that that total space can only have 43 people for purposes of fire egress. They could choose to have 30 guests and 12 people in the kitchen. It's just the total is the 43.
No, and, you know, they could have 50 patrons and...
I think she was just more concerned about additional employees.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, so would anybody care to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a conditional use permit for serving guests currently at the hotel and their friends.
I will second it.
Call for a vote?
And did, did you include that so they could serve beer and wine, I mean, in separate?
And that would include the, the approval for beer and wine to guests and their friends on premise?
9:00 p.m.?
And the 9:00 p.m. all done?
9:00 p.m.'s in here, right? It's already part of the condition, like, the recommendation.
So I'll second.
Yep. Call for vote? Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Saye?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Call for a vote?
Paul, this is Isaac Rosen by phone. I just wanted to check about the coastal development permit and sequoia exemption.
They, let's see.
Was that implied in the motion? I think is what he said. Was that implied in the motion?
Oh, you're asking me?
I think it wasn't implied.
Okay, so let's...
Okay, let's adopt that.
We need to...
I would, I would recommend adopting the CUP with the conditions mentioned and the other recommendations within, the other recommendations before vice staff.
So the...
So moved?
Okay, thank you. And we're going to second again?
I will second that.
Okay, and another roll call?
Aye.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Putnam?
Aye.
Chairman Saye?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Glass?
Aye.
And Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any commissioner business? General.
Light Community Avalon Chef Department for what they did for the kids at Avalon for the prom. Thought, and we felt, and making plans, we got together, it was outstanding. Kids were down, deserved it, it was great to see everyone out, that's why you're in a small town. But the chef's department was great, they just came down and made sure everything was safe, made sure that we got all the kids separated. We took a single picture of them, the date would be in the cart, behind them, they would be in the cart, either they're driving or up there, and it was really something to see, it was pretty...
It was adorable.
It was nice, it was nice. It was nice.
Very, and balloons up the street, you run up and down, my daughter would go like that, this is just, this is great.
Maybe it's a new tradition.
Yeah, well, hopefully, hopefully they can dance together.
Add it to the old tradition.
Exactly, but I just, I thought the chef's department was outstanding, and I thought the town was outstanding.
Yeah. And I would like to wish our city manager happy birthday, I couldn't believe she was here, but I get it. And the other thing I want to say, are we down, is this our last meeting with you, Amanda?
Possibly, yeah.
So it's coming, what's the date again, June 16th? I have it on my calendar, so we have...
We need to do a Zoom party, or a cocktail Zoom party.
Can we go up to your house, I'm teasing? So, anyway, I just, I...
Or you can stay.
And on that, I've been spending some time dealing with a couple of different solar companies, try to get a solar education going, and one of them in particular has offered to come to the island and, you know, provide a presentation and share with the community how this can be done very affordably and so on, which I totally support, but with the COVID thing going on right now, let's get through those hurdles, and we'll invite them to a meeting here in the, hopefully, near future, so that we can get some things going to save our earth a bit.
I think that's wonderful, considering now it's a mandate from the state.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, by the way, yeah, what we approved tonight, is that solar?
The building code requires it.
Sorry about that.
I don't think we have to condition that, I think, if it's a requirement.
Yes, now a requirement.
Okay, I don't know.
That's the building inspector.
It's not on our shoulders.
Too late.
That's the building inspector.
On that note, I'll put my glasses back on so I can fog them up.
Okay, good night, Tony.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Isaac. Meeting adjourned.